Good evening and welcome to the February. Are we ready to start recording? Good evening and welcome to the February 14th, 2023 regular business meeting of the McMinnville City Council. We have to call the meeting to order and ask our city recorder Claudia Cisneros to do a roll call, please.
Counselor Geary.
Good evening.
Counselor Menke.
Present.
Counselor Chenoweth. Counselor Payne.
Here.
Counselor Peralta.
Here.
Council President Garvin.
Here.
And Mayor Drapkin.
Here. And seeing that we have so many of our firefighters here with us this evening, I would ask our Fire Department to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
The flag of the United States of America, the republic of which sustains, one nation, under God, creative as well. We do have just one.
Thank you so much. And while we have so many of you, I'll rush into our life-saving awards this evening. And I would like to call on Chief Hanafin to present those life-saving awards, please.
Mayor and counsel, thank you very much for the opportunity to be able to recognize some of our crew members with the Fire Department tonight. I would like to call forward a few of those now. Taylor Holt, Jordan Davis, Tanner Morton, and Gary Steindorf. And with his permission, I would also like to call up the patient that this scenario involved, that's Joseph Hancock, and his roommate Kelly will join as well. She was helpful in the initial efforts. All right. This evening, we are recognizing these crew members and their efforts in the chain of survival. The American Heart Association recognizes several elements that contribute to the survival of a patient in cardiac arrest. This includes early recognition and activation of the emergency response system, early CPR and rapid defibrillation, advanced resuscitation efforts by EMS, post-cardiac arrest care and recovery. Our crews train endlessly to perform their part in the chain of survival. It truly takes a team approach to have successful outcomes. The response being recognized tonight occurred on December 14th, 2022. Crews were dispatched on an unconscious patient, which was upgraded to a cardiac arrest just prior to EMS arrival. Joseph, roommate here, Kelly, was initially helping out with some of the life-saving efforts just prior to our crews' revlon scene. And the patient was a 58-year-old male who experienced a medical event at home after reporting that he was not feeling well. Crews began CPR, utilized an AED, and performed advanced life-saving efforts. While working through rounds of medication, CPR, and respiratory assistance, the patient's cardiac rhythm changed and his pulse returned. Crews transported the patient to the hospital. The patient was able to fully recover and returned home within a short time and was actually able to stop by our station within just a few weeks of his hospital stay and thanked the crews himself. So please help me in recognizing our crews tonight. As responders, these are the calls that truly make a difference and help us to keep going amongst the day-to-day calls that are sometimes a little more difficult. As part of the recognition, we would like to give them each a coin that recognizes their part in the chain of survival.
Thank you all. And then staying with our fire theme, we are going to invite up Chief Law for a Hearts and Hands presentation. And I will actually ask the council to step off the dais, come over here, and choose your Valentine's partner for the next part of this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Oh, good. You're welcome. Come on, take that. All right. Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Council, for having me tonight. One of the things, February is National Heart Month. Probably know why. It might have to do with today's date. And so a couple of things, as you saw tonight, CPR really does save lives. The faster we get rescuers on a patient's chest, the higher the chance of survival for our patients. Roughly 73% of out-of-hospital cardiac arrests occur at home, and roughly 17% are in a public setting such as workplaces, schools, restaurants, those types of places. The rest, 10%, are at care facilities. Here in Yamhill County and McMinnville, we are what we call a PulsePoint community. And if you haven't seen that app or haven't downloaded that app, I'd highly encourage it because what it does is it alerts you if you're within a half-mile of a cardiac arrest in a public setting, then your phone will alert and give you directions on how to get to that patient so that we can get hands on the chest that much faster. Sadly, across America, 60% of people don't get CPR prior to EMS arrival. We saw tonight exactly why it's important for somebody to get on the chest as quickly as possible. Part of that, too, is our dispatchers are trained to give CPR instructions. And CPR can be very confusing. People can be very concerning with it. But what we thought is we'll come in, we'll demonstrate, show to you, show to our viewers, show to our community how easy hands-only CPR is. Doesn't require breathing, doesn't require anything fancy, no equipment necessary. You're carrying everything with you that you got, both your hands right there. Each of your mannequins are light-up fancy mannequins, if you don't mind turning them on here. Little switch there on the bottom. And Mayor, I think I got yours on already. I think, let me just see here real quick. Maybe not. There we go. And what that red light that you saw on there kind of indicates blood flow and how we want to get blood to the brain, which is the most vital organ inside the body. So I'm going to have you guys, if you don't mind, kneel down next to your patient. And we're just going to simply show how simple it is. Put the heel of your hand right on the sternum, right between the breasts, right there, exactly. Other hand directly over the top. And we want to push down at 1/3 to 1/2 the chest depth at a rate of about 100 to 120 beats per minute. So as you go, you can see the blood work up to the brain, a little bit faster there. There you go. Perfect. Slow down just a little bit there. And if you come down a little bit on the chest, a little bit further down towards the belly. So speed up there a little bit, Zach. And then if you can, just keep your hands on it, on the chest there. Slow down just a little bit there. Good. Perfect. That's exactly where you want to be, right there. All right. Thank you. You guys can stop, or you can keep going, whatever you want to do. We still got a crew back there in the back, just in case. But that's really down and dirty, the quick and fast part of hands-only CPR, compressions-only CPR. As you can see, it's very simple. Like I said, our dispatch center, when you call 911 and you say you have somebody with cardiac arrest, they start going through the process of getting the patient onto a hard, firm surface and start pushing in the center of the chest at a rate of 100 to 120. Common thing to do is sing along with the Bee Gees, "Stayin' Alive."
Do it. Eagles.
Do it, diddy. Baby shark for a younger generation.
So pick the eagles.
Take it easy? Is it? It's got to be 100 to 120. Yep, absolutely, absolutely. Any questions?
Can we pitch the Fire Department those classes?
Sure. So we do. We actually, now that we're getting out of COVID a little bit more, our Fire and Life Safety Team actually is going out and doing some hands-only CPR demonstrations. They've got one at the Community Center, I'm sorry, the Senior Center, a month from tonight. Is that? I think it's in mid-March at the Senior Center. We also, at the Fire Department, do hold certified courses, a little bit longer, a little bit more in-depth. But we hold certified courses. Our volunteers put those on every other month to the public so we can get that out there. But I encourage, if you don't have PulsePoint, download it. It'll also help coach you through CPR if need be, and it'll alert you again if you have a cardiac arrest within, I think it's a half-a-mile of where you're at in a public setting, such as at the store. Oh, yeah. It was my reminder. So we are, like I said, a PulsePoint-connected community here. Everywhere in Yamhill County has that app, and it's free to download.
Wonderful. Thank you for the instructional, and always good to practice. We will now take comments from community members. Any interested audience members are invited to provide comments. And any comment provided that requires some type of follow-up will be assigned to a staff member. Anyone may speak on any topic other than a matter in litigation, a quasi-judicial land use matter, or a matter scheduled for public hearing at some future date. Comments will be limited to three minutes per person for a total of 30 minutes. If you're on Zoom and you wish to speak, please use the Raise Your Hand function. And once your turn is up, we will announce your name and unmute your mic. You may also send a chat directly to our city recorder Claudia Cisneros. We'll announce you. Claudia, do we have anyone signed up for this evening?
No one that has signed up yet.
Okay. Do we have any members of the audience that are in the gallery that would like to provide public comment this evening? If so, please come up to the table and state your name and address for the record. Not seeing anyone. Do we have any community members on Zoom this evening that would like to provide public Not seeing any on Zoom either. We will now move to advice and information items, first from counselors on committee and board assignments, and then hopefully to department heads, assuming I don't move the agenda along too quickly. We will start on my right with Counselor Payne, please.
Landscape review does not meet until tomorrow.
Counselor Peralta.
McMinnville Council of Governments annual meeting is tomorrow. I hope we'll be seeing a good delegation from McMinnville and Yamhill County, lots of awards.
Thank you. And to Zoom, we will go to Counselor Menke.
The CET Committee met on February 6th, and we are ready to present to the Affordable Housing Committee what we recommend for construction excise tax.
Thank you. And Counselor Chenoweth.
Happy Valentine's Day, everybody, and I have nothing to report.
Thank you, Counselor Geary.
Thank you. DEIAC met and appointed a new co-chair. We firmed up the interview process for the two open positions we have and are interviewing for. Then the other, rest of the bulk of the meeting was spent reviewing prior work plan as well as the MACTOWN 2032 strategic plan and how that could, what's in there for DEI work and can dovetail into the massaging or editing of our current work plan. And HR Director Hedges was generous enough with her time to join us for that conversation. It went very well. MIRAC, I missed the last meeting, but I think you'll be hearing from that. And then the newly-formed Community Safety Task Force had its first meeting, excuse me, had its first meeting primarily consisted of introductions and round-the-table discussion, discussion of process, how and when for that group going forward, as well as sort of a topic creation and overview relating to things that would be helpful for that group to review and go over. And then I read a series of updates provided to me by Mayor Drapkin, and we'll move forward on a more topic-based discussion process from here.
Thank you. Council President Garvin.
Thank you, Mayor. Airport Commission hasn't met. YCOM was slated to meet today, but that was canceled. Fire districting things continue to move forward. Union President Godfrey and myself have been presenting to the community and nonprofits from that extent. And with that gearing up for the upcoming ballot measure, I was hoping to have you pull the counsel this evening on the desire to sign on to a letter that'll be drafted by myself and just our general support as a council, as a body for the Fire District passing, that we can put that into the voter's pamphlet. And I'd come back to our next meeting, the 28th of February, with that, if that's the desire of the council.
Okay. So we're not taking any official action, but I just kind of look around to a nod to Council President invest his time well, if the council would be willing, more or less, to sign on to a letter of support for the Fire District. I see some nods here. I see Counselor Menke nodding.
I have a question.
Counselor Peralta.
Do you know how much, sorry, do you know how much it costs to put a statement in?
In the voter's pamphlet? I believe it's around $3.50, but that's intended to be cost-neutral to this body.
Right. Okay.
Thank you. Okay. Wonderful. Thank you. Great. Thank you. Well, thank you. And then I wanted to let the council know that our last meeting of Affordable Housing Committee was postponed due to the fact that both Counselor Menke, who chairs the committee with me, and I were both at City Day with many of you. But in our next working agenda, we're going to be reviewing the construction excise tax recommendation that Counselor Menke already mentioned. And then because we also have many new members of that committee, we're going to be doing an overall review of our work agenda in addition to hearing updates from our community partners, which we hear regularly at that meeting. I also wanted to let you know that on your desk, you have a memo here prepared by our interim city attorney Walt Gowell referencing council quorum requirements. And for those of you that are not in the room, we'll have paper copies of these for you next time. We can also email them out. But this is just because we've had a number of things that we've been invited to or attending as a group and just making sure that we're always minding our Ps and Qs, so to speak, and have good clarity over quorum requirements. And then lastly, as you know, Governor Kotek released an executive order 2302 declaring a state of emergency for some counties. And as I believe you know, as I've reported here, I sent a letter to the governor asking to include us in that executive order. And the guidance that we got back told us to send a request to our county commissioners, one of whom we have here this evening. And so this morning, Council President Garvin and I did send a letter to our county commissioners asking to open up a conversation about what that would look like for the city of McMinnville or Yamhill County if the data supports that. And we've heard back from the county commission already that they're reviewing the request and will be back in touch. And with that, we'll move to department head reports, starting with our city manager, Jeff Towery.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. One item to report. Six years ago tonight, my wife and I spent Valentine's Day in this council chambers. The former mayor, Hill, gave Doris an orchid, which still survives to this day, on our kitchen counter, and it made her cry. The city council appointed me as city manager that night, and it was one of the proudest nights of my career. I am still thrilled to be here, and thank you for your support. I love this place. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for being with us. We appreciate it.
Happy work anniversary.
And to our interim city attorney, Walt Gowell.
Nothing to report, Mayor.
Thank you. And to our community development director, Heather Richards.
Nothing to report. Thank you.
Thank you. Chief of Police, Matt Scales.
Real quickly, obviously through communications, email, I'd ask that you take a look at the press releases that we pushed out Friday, Saturday, and for the updates, as well as this afternoon's or this morning's update on last week's work involved with the livability, transient issues that we've been dealing with. So that's all I've got. Thank you.
Thank you. Fire Chief, Rich Leifer.
Thank you, Mayor. We have, as an update on some of our staffing, we finally have a paramedic firefighter getting ready to come onboard full-time. At the same time, we just received someone's two-weeks notice, so we're transitioning one for one. And we also have our single-world paramedic coming through the process, wrapping up the process, and should be coming onboard the next week. So hopefully, within the next two to three weeks, four weeks, we should have the capacity to have our single, our peak unit up and running in addition to the 24-hour BLS. So we're getting to the point where the units on the road are up and running. We're still working through the scenes with some recruitment on the paramedic firefighter positions.
Thank you, Chief. To Vicki Hedges, our HR director, manager.
We are working, I am working through, revamping some of our recruitment efforts in partnership with our different departments. This week, we welcome a new court clerk and a GIS specialist to the city.
Wonderful. Thank you. City Recorder, Claudia Cisneros.
Yeah. We kicked off Show the Love for Your Community Members February 1st, and this is running all through the month of February. This is to nominate a community member to receive an award at the Community Fair and State of the City event, which is going to be on Thursday, May 25th. So please share with all your community members, nominate someone. We're really excited about this new event and hope to see everyone there.
Thank you so much. And I'll go to Zoom and to our finance director, Jennifer Cuellar.
Nothing to report this evening. Thank you.
All right. Thank you so much. Thank you so much for announcing the save the date for the Community Fair State of the City address on May 25th. We'll now go to our consent agenda. Does any counselor request to have any item removed from the consent agenda and placed on the regular agenda? Not seeing any. I will ask for a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
So moved.
And I'd ask for a second.
Second.
I have a motion from Counselor Payne and a second from Counselor Geary. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 And those opposed, signify by saying nay. The consent agenda has passed unanimously. Counselor Chenoweth, did you vote?
I did. I just raised my hand since it was easier than trying to turn my mic on.
Thank you, sir. And the consent agenda passes unanimously. We will now consider Resolution Number 2023-08, a resolution authorizing the city manager to sign a contract with McMinnville Economic Development Partnership in the amount of $245,000 for coordination of sustainable localized workforce programs in association with McMinnville's Business Recovery and Resiliency Grant. And I'd like to call on our community development director, Heather Richards, to present. And Jody Christensen, Special Projects Manager.
Yeah, actually, so I'll introduce Jody, and she'll present this. But for those of you who don't know, we were very lucky to be able to hire Jody Christensen to be our Special Projects Manager in the Community Development Department. And she's been working with us since August, I believe. Is it August?
September.
September, oh.
But who's count?
But she's moving mountains. So anyways, she's here to present to you on this, what we call internally our Nobel Grant, the grant that Ron Noble provides to the city of McMinnville for business resiliency and recovery.
Thank you. I do have a short PowerPoint. If I could, I'd like to share updates about the entire program, and then we can jump right into the recommendation for the acceptance of the resolution. Okay, we're almost there. So as you know, in the 21 legislative session, Ron Noble was able to bring home $750,000 to the city of McMinnville to address the ongoing impacts of COVID-19. And through that process, this body asked the Economic Vitality Committee to look at that fund and what could be done with it and how best to invest that money. And so I'm going to talk a little bit about the grant timeline, the plan, the progress, and then what the next steps are. So with my tech over here. It was not an easy process to bring the money home. In the legislative bill where it was assigned, the language did not match what the EVLC wanted to do with that money. So we had to go back to the drawing board and do a legislative fix, which gave time to the EVLC to really work through the plan, but it did delay the money coming into the community. And so I say that because it feels like a long time ago, from 2001 to where we are today, but there was lots of good work being done during that time. As you know, it is ARPA funding, American Rescue Act Plan funding, and so that requires the funds to be meaningfully obligated by the date of June 30th, 2024. Most of the ARPA funds are obligated to be spent by December 31st, 2026, but this is a little bit different. We have got to prove to the state that we're spending this money, it's on its way, or it's been completed by that date. So that's what we're working towards. There are three areas that we focused on that the committee decided that they wanted to focus on. So that is recruiting and retaining workforce, trained workforce, and business resiliency. So in those three areas, the committee really looked at what are the projects that could be deployed to impact those three areas. So today, we'll be talking about one specific project, but I will share with you that there are other projects underway as well. So under recruiting and retaining workforce, that was important to Representative Noble, that money get in the hands of businesses that were dealing with the ongoing impacts of COVID. So this is a project designed to not only provide business assistance grants that companies could apply for under the auspices of doing work to retain and recruit employees, but it's also an opportunity for the city to lean in on making sure that we're reaching all of our businesses, particularly those businesses that were underserved and underrepresented during the COVID initial response. So businesses that may have had a barrier in some way to receive funds. So in this goal, we're going to have business assistance grants, but we're also bringing on a specialist who knows how to deal, how to build networks with community members that may have barriers from everything, from a language barrier to other barriers that may have occurred, so site, or veteran, or woman-known businesses that may not have had access to those funds. So we're in the final stages of the grant to bring on that community outreach specialist, and then we'll move into the grant piece. Under the second goal, trained workforce, this is the one we'll be talking to you tonight about in more detail, but this is really designed to take a look at all of the different activities and organizations that are working in workforce development, and how to bring that all together in a coordinated effort so that McMinnville has a unique response to its businesses when they say, "I'm looking for people," that there's a place and a resource that's available for a business to navigate. So that coordination has a lot of components. So that coordination has a lot of components to it. It's not only identifying existing training, it's identifying what is missing in our community and how to develop that. It's looking at the possibility of apprentice programs. So there will be a single point of coordination through this particular project. The last one is business resiliency, and that has two components. One is the Micro Enterprise Services of Oregon is a specialist in helping businesses that are often not able to access bank fund, bank loans because of the size of business, the stage of business, or there may be some compelling reason that it's not right for a bank. This organization works with micro businesses. They tend to be very small and tend to be businesses that are more service-oriented. But the relationship that they're going to have with McMinnville is unique in that we will be able to provide a number of loans that have a forgivable component to them. So it'll be a 40/60 loan, 40% of the loan will be forgiven. That's the piece that this grant through Representative Noble is paying for. So we're in the final negotiation with them on making sure that we've got all the right numbers, and those loans will be deployed and offered to our community members. The final piece is a bilingual business training and mentorship program. We're in the final stages of negotiation with the Chamber of Commerce. They will be hiring consultants to develop and deliver a targeted business training program for owners and operators of businesses that have really struggled in how to pivot with the new world of responding and working in this COVID environment. And so those are the four projects within that grant, and tonight, we're, maybe I should stop for just a moment, see if there are any questions.
Thank you. Any questions from the council? Councillor Geary?
The workforce development coordinator, is that going to be a new person working for MEDP, or is that going to be MEDP performing that function?
So the proposal that they've presented to us, it would include hiring a coordinator.
Be a new person?
It would be a new person, yes.
Okay.
I'm going to look back to the executive director and get a thumb, I got a thumbs up. So yes, that is true.
Thank you. Other questions from the council? Okay, thank you.
All right. So tonight before you, you have a brief report and background on the grant for the coordination of sustainable localized workforce programs. In this document, you also have the process in which we went out for an RFP. We had one proposer, that was McMinnville Economic Development Partnership. They were successful through the process, and so tonight, we come before you seeking a, we're recommending that the city council adopt the proposed resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into a professional services agreement contract with MEDP for the 1812 State ARPA McMinnville Business Recovery and Resiliency Plan, goal to coordination of sustainable localized workforce programming. We need an acronym for that.
So moved.
I was going to call for council discussion, but we do have a motion on the floor. So I have a motion from
I think the motion's out of order. I would like to have
Like to have some council discussion. Do you mind withdrawing your motion, councillor?
I have no problem withdrawing my motion.
Thank you, sir. Okay, so we'll now open this up for council discussion. Do I have any councillors? Yes, councillor Peralta.
Thank you. First, Jody, I really appreciate the work you're doing for the city. Thank you very much. And thank you to the Economic Vitality Leadership Council and the folks at MEDP for this. The first question I have is, how broadly was the RFP circulated?
It was an informal RFP process, so we reached out to organizations that we felt might be interested in, regional organizations that might be interested in submitting for this RFP.
Do you have a ballpark of how many?
I believe there are 10 or 11 organizations that I reached out to, economic development, workforce development, and there were a few nonprofit organizations that might have had interest in applying for part or all of this.
So you feel comfortable that it was broadly circulated?
Yes.
Okay, and there just wasn't a lot of interest beyond MEDP?
I think this is a very unique opportunity, and we're asking a lot to occur within this coordination. It's not, it's not singularly a person, it's really looking at a systematic approach to how we do workforce development and respond to workforce issues within this community. So that's a very unique skill set. Organization would have to understand the community, take the time to do that, and then really dive into the elements of what we're asking them to build out and identify where the barriers are in a very short timeframe. So this has to be meaningfully underway by June 30th, 2024. So it's, it does not have a long horizon. You don't have a lot of catch-up, you know, you don't have a lot of runway to be able to sort of build it out. You really need to start jumping right in, and so I think it's a unique opportunity.
Okay. All right, well, thank you.
Thank you. Any additional council conversation or discussion? Okay, not hearing any. I will call for a motion.
So moved.
Thank you. I have a motion from councillor Chenoweth. I'll look for a second.
I'll second.
I have a second from councillor Payne. I would ask all those in favor to signify by saying aye.
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 All the, thank you, and all those opposed to signify by saying nay. Thank you, and the resolution has passed unanimously. Thank you very much. Thank you, Jody. I'll now consider resolution number 2023-09, a resolution authorizing the city manager to sign an annexation agreement with Andrew Johansson, property owner for the future annexation of tax lots R442100900 and 01200. And I'd like to ask our community development director, Heather Richards, to present.
Yes, thank you, Mayor and councillors. I do have a PowerPoint to share with you, as this involves some maps. This is our first annexation agreement that we're doing under our new program. But what we're looking at is two properties here that are just underneath the Three Mile Lane Bridge on either side of them. They've been in the UGB for a while, so they're not part of our new UGB program. And the property owner and I have been in discussion about them for several years now, trying to figure out how to really maximize those for housing, and they have come in with a, an application to annex into the city. They're unique properties because they are mostly floodplain, so most of that property is embedded in the floodplain. There's only a little amount that is buildable, if you can see it here on the map, the yellow area just above the red line for one property, and then on the other side, it's the area embedded within the green, but there's a steep slope to get down to that property. And this is a map that shows the floodplain zone itself, and then just beyond the yellow dash line is the buildable area that's not in the floodplain. In the city of McMinnville, our floodplain zone, we do not allow development at all. So it would only be the area that's outside the floodplain, excuse me, that would be buildable. And the applicant has requested that that be zoned R1. We do ask them to come in and show us how they, how they intend to develop it initially. So the applicant would like to develop one structure on the property, just, just at the end of Nehemiah Lane. But part of our annexation process is understanding what could be the full buildout on this property, so we can ensure that when we're annexing in, we have the appropriate services to serve that property. And so they have given us a concept master plan, which is part of the annexation application process, which shows the ability to do three parcels eventually with three structures on them nestled into that, that little area on the end there. If you recall, we changed our process in McMinnville after we did our UGB amendment in 2021, where we talked about several different steps for annexation. We used to have an annexation application, and then it went to a ballot vote of the community. Now we have an annexation application that comes in, and our first process is doing an annexation agreement between the city council and the property owner. What this is, is it's a contract between the city council and the property owner as to what needs to occur to get to a place where the city council considers annexation. It's not a guarantee of annexation, but it's all the steps that need to occur to get to a place of considering it. And then we go through the process of the annexation ordinance after those steps have all been performed. One of those steps is the land use step, because we want to make sure when the property comes into the city, that it's ready to be built and entitled and zoned into an urban zone. So the annexation application itself is all spelled out in our new Title 16 as to what needs to, what, what needs to come in with the application. I wanted to share with you what it looks like. It's a pretty extensive product. They did an excellent job with this, so glad to see the first one in is really setting the standard. But we do ask a lot of information as to what's occurring with the property and how it can be developed, and that it does need to include that concept master plan, because this property is so unique in that very, very, only about one and a half acres is actually buildable on the property, that the concept master plan is fairly simple. You saw that with the three parcels and the three structures. Then we go through the annexation agreement process, and what that is, that's a, that's an ability for us as a city to say, we need these public facilities and services to serve that property so you can build on it, and for us to provide those, we may need this and that from you. It may, could be right-of-way dedication, it could be a waiver or remonstrance for a future improvement that we want to do in that area. We want to make sure that we get all that into the contract as well. And then we also say, we want you to go through a land use process. So the land use process is separate from this annexation process, and we say, this is the type of land use process we want you to go through to meet our comprehensive plan. And we have several different paths in there for this particular property because of the fact that it was already in our UGB, so it's, it's already got a residential, residential comprehensive plan designation on it. It does not need to go through an area planning process, and it just needs to go through the concept master plan process and not the larger master plan process. So we are asking them to go through a zone change for when they come into the city for both floodplain zone and an R1 zone. We also look at what our public facility plans tell us we want to see happen on these properties before they come in, so that we can have that conversation with the property owners of, we have future plans for this property to serve the public in this way, be it the public right-of-way or other amenities. In this particular case, because Nehemiah essentially dead ends at this property, there isn't need for dedication of public right-of-way, and we still have property on either side of Nehemiah Lane as it traverses through this area that's still in the county, so we're not asking for that to be annexed in or improved either. The fire district has already looked at it and feels comfortable with going through the land use process of what they need to occur there. But we do want to have the ability to ask the owner to agree to not to remonstrate in the future if we need to do any improvements associated with the public amenities in terms of the right-of-way. And then this will be served by septic initially because we don't have wastewater services to it. However, what's interesting about this property is in our Cities Parks Recreation and Open Space Master Plan, we do identify a future multipurpose trail along the Yamhill River in that plan that would, that would traverse through both properties, 0900 as well as 01200. And we had a conversation with the property owner about that. They're supportive of it. We're not in a place at the city right now to bring that property in, to have it dedicated to the city and build the trail. And so you, you'll see information, language in the annexation agreement that talks about when we are at a place where we want to build that trail, it will be dedicated to the city, and we will move that trail forward. The annexation agreement gets recorded against the property, so that will carry with the property moving forward in terms of that contractual arrangement. So our annexation process that we put together, this is sort of that flow chart, and this talks through how this particular application met that. They did apply in June of 2022. It's taken us a while to sort of prop up the program and, and, and put it through our process internally. And so they've been very patient, and I appreciate that. Tonight, we're at the annexation agreement. They've provided the concept master plan. They've already also provided their land use application for the zone change. We have already noticed that to DLCD for March 16th, 2023 Planning Commission hearing, and we tentatively have it scheduled for an April 25, 2023 city council public hearing with you. We will probably bring in, if everything else works out in the annexation agreement, the annexation ordinance on April 25th as well, so that you're making a decision on the land use decision, and then also making a decision on the annexation that evening. And that is the presentation for this particular property. The property owner is in the room as well this evening.
Thank you. And we'll go to council discussion. Council president Garvin?
Thank you, Heather. In your presentation, you mentioned that initially it'll be served by septic. Does that mean eventually there is infrastructure that'll run out to that property, and who funds that infrastructure? Is that on the applicant, or is that come out of city SDCs?
So we will be collecting SDCs as we do. This area of the city is all in the UGB, in the UGB but not within the city, so we don't have services in any sort of close proximity to this property, and our code is written in such a way where we allow the septic system up till a point when the services get within a certain linear feet of the property, and then they need to connect. That system will be built through our SDC methodology and development. So as development occurs incrementally along Nehemiah Lane and brings the system down, once it gets to within a certain linear feet of this property, they will be put into our program to connect to it.
And then the applicant pays for that sewer lateral, just like any residential does right now, when we're asking them to redo their lateral?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Additional council discussion? Councillor Peralta?
Thank you. So I just want to confirm, this is basically both sides of the new bridge and old bridge coming into town, is that right?
Yes, and it's interesting. So if you look at what's in the city, we, we actually have a strip of the 0900 tax lot within the city already. I'm assuming we brought that in because we needed to put the bridge across it, and you can't put an urban transportation system in a rural area. So we have partial, we have a partial amount of the one tax lot already in the city, and this is bringing in the remainder of it.
Got it.
The large tax lot where the, the three parcels could be and where the, the initial structure will be is on the western side of the bridge.
Got it. So, so the first comment I have is for the applicants, I think, is this the family here? I, I really appreciate the, the care that you have given to that property. It's beautiful property. I consider it a gateway to our city. And so I think it's a wonderful opportunity for us to bring the property into the, into the UGB formally and to provide services there. I'm just going to share a personal desire, something that I would love to see in the floodplain of your property. It's not part of, you know, my decision in the application or anything, but I would love to see that area seeded with camice in the floodplain, so that when people come in to the city in the spring, they would get the, the field of camice. We have it, I'm on the same creek that you are, or I'm on the Cozine part of it, and it's native down there, and, and it will probably do pretty well. So I just wanted to put that two cents in because it's something that I've, I've wanted to have happened for a long time, so since you're here, I thought I would share that. Aside from that, I, it seems like a, a good proposal, and I appreciate the, the report that a lot of effort went into it, so thank you.
Thank you. Other discussion from the council? Councillor Geary?
Just prepping my motion hand. No discussion.
I just want to confirm, Heather, that there's no residential development planned for the east side of the bridge, because you said it's too, it's too steep, or it's just not planned right now?
The land right there is too steep to, to get services to, and, and the, the property that's available, if you look at the figure that's on page.
I've got 37 of our bracket.
Yes, yes. So you see that little bit there that sort of goes, where the yellow line goes up and down? Yeah, so the property available doesn't yield much in the way of housing, but we did have that discussion about whether there was that opportunity.
Thank you. Thank you.
And, and you said the annexation agreement, the, the future dedication and trail land follows, so it follows property owners or change hands. And I have a question. Are you, if you don't mind, are you, is, are you related to Margaret Johansson? Was she a, well, then I guess thank your family for her incredible contributions. Margaret Johansson was a master weaver and an incredible artist who greatly contributed to the textile arts that have come out of not only Yamhill County, but Oregon as a whole. So thank you for that. And with that, I would entertain a motion to approve resolution number 2023 dash zero nine.
Go moved.
I have a motion from Counsel Gary and a second from Counsel Peralta. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 And those, those opposed, say nay. And the resolution has passed unanimously. Thank you so much. We'll now consider resolution number 2023 dash ten, a resolution adopting a supplemental budget for fiscal year 2022 dash 23 and making supplemental appropriations for the general fund, wastewater services fund and information services fund for approved American Rescue Plan Act projects and repealing resolution number 2023 dash zero five. And I would call on our finance director, Jennifer Quayar, to present.
Um, yeah. Good evening. This may seem very, very familiar because in your last meeting, this supplemental budget resolution was presented for ARPA, but there was a clerical error. The highly technical term in finance land is a boo-boo. And so we wanted to bring it back forward. Nothing has changed in terms of the numbers. The ARPA projects that we are appropriating money have all, as before, they are the same and have been already approved by council and budget committee as projects worthy of funding with American Rescue Plan Act dollars. And this just corrected the record. So if folks have any questions about either the error or, you know, the substantive components of the supplemental budget resolution, I'm happy to answer.
Thank you. Any counselors have discussion or questions? Not seeing any, I would call for a motion to approve resolution number 2023 dash ten.
So moved.
I have a motion from Council President Garvin. I'd ask for a second. Oh, and I have a second from Counsel Manke. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed signify by saying nay. And the resolution has passed unanimously. And I will now adjourn this meeting of the McMinnville City Council at 7:52 PM. And we will be going into an urban renewal agency meeting following this. Thank you all for coming. And this is open as well if anybody would like to stay. And I will now call the McMinnville Urban Renewal Agency meeting to order at 7:52 PM. Do we need to do a roll call for URA? No? Okay. Then we will consider resolution number 2023 dash zero one, a resolution of the McMinnville Urban Renewal Board approving the annual financial report for the McMinnville Urban Renewal Agency for fiscal year ended June 30th, 2022 per Oregon Revised Statute four five seven dot four six zero. And I'll call on our community development director, Heather Richards, to present.
Yes, so this is an annual report that we have to file every year. This is written into the state law for urban renewal administration. And what it is, is it's, it's really an accounting of how we, what money has come into the urban renewal agency and how we have spent it. So if you go through the report, we talk about the money that we've received. We talked about how we have expended it and primarily, and this is for fiscal year ending June 30, 2022. And that year, we primarily spent it on our Third Street Streetscape Improvement Project and our Development Assistance Program. Then we also have to report what our long-term bond obligations are. We only have one right now. It's Alpine Avenue. As we move, get more mature in this program, we'll probably have several of these stacked up with each other as we're starting to do the larger public improvement projects and we'll start reporting on all of those. And then we talk about the next year. So the current year that we're in right now in terms of what we expect for revenue for that year, how we have determined that we're going to expend that revenue. And again, the primary ones was Third Street improvements as well as the Development Assistance Program. And then this one, you see a larger fund for public off-street parking. The McMinnville Urban Renewal Advisory Committee has voted to approve a contract to pave the parking lot at the First Presbyterian Church just right across the street from the city hall as, because we use it for public parking. And then one of the important things that we're watching is our maximum indebtedness. So as an urban renewal plan, you, you can only spend so much money, in debt, so much money to implement your program. For this particular program, that's $30 million. And so we're tracking how much we're spending for that. We have, we're early in the program, so we have a remaining indebtedness of about $27 million still to spend. And lastly, we talk about the impact on the taxing districts. So this is really forgone revenue. This is revenue that they would be receiving as taxing districts under the basis that the type of development that's occurring in the urban renewal area would have occurred without the improvements. But actually, many of the things that we've seen occur have been occurring because of some of the improvements and investments that we've been making as an urban renewal agency. But it's an annual tracking just to sort of say, this is what's being invested into the urban renewal agency and what the proportionate share would be for these overlapping taxing districts. Typically, the city is the largest one in these ones. And then the school district as well. The school district is backfilled by the state school fund. And when you have a young urban renewal district like McMinnville's, we're not very impactful on the state school fund. It's those longer, more mature ones, like the city of Portland has many of these, that's probably impacting the school fund much more than the McMinnville one. So I also wanted to talk a little bit about what MIRAC talks about when they put this annual report together. They did recommend at their last meeting for you to approve this. And then we noticed it in the newspaper and, and post it for anybody who's interested in it and send it to the overlapping taxing districts. But as you know, we have a baker's dozen projects that are in the plan. That's what we're spending money on. And a plan also says how much money we can, we can spend on those projects and when we expend them. And that's all done based on a careful community dialogue and financial feasibility analysis. So we, we're following that fairly succinctly. We did a project dashboard this year to sort of understand where we're at with each project. This is the property assistance program. There's $940,000 assigned to it in the urban renewal plan in $2,013. So those are all indexed, those dollars are all indexed forward based on inflation and I'm just sharing the $2,013. But we have spent about $468,000 in that program. And then we are also, that program is set up where we're, a large portion of the dollars are in loans that are being paid back or the grant, if the property sells within five years of receiving a grant, a property assistance grant, it gets paid back to the city. And so we have had those paybacks start to occur. And so we've generated resources of about $96,000. We'll start to track that because those funds will go right back into this property assistance program so that when the urban renewal funds taper off, that $940,000 is spent out, the resources that have been coming in on this program continue to move that program forward. And that's how, that's the tradition of how many urban renewal agencies operate these programs. In terms of parking, we actually haven't spent a lot of money on parking yet. There's only a million dollars in the plan for parking, which is not much. And we talk about that a lot as the urban renewal advisory committee. But we've only spent about $14,000 on the feasibility and utilization analysis that we did and then that parking lot improvement project that has been scheduled for this spring. The Alpine Avenue Street Improvement Project, half of it was our first big effort that we did. And so we've, we have spent a little over $2 million on that project when you bring in interest and financing. And then the Third Street Improvement Project, right now, we're in the design phase of that and we have about $220,000 that have been invested or will be invested in that project in terms of the design phase. We always have discussion at MIRAC about where are we at with revenue? So there's been some big projects built in the urban renewal area. Shouldn't that be generating a lot of revenue? And the coffers are full and overflowing. And really, we are tracking with where we expect to be tracking with revenue, which is good. That means we're investing the, the program wisely to make, to do what we need it to do so we can build up that increment, so we can do those larger projects down the road. But what this, this table shows you is when we first put the plan together, we had a low growth scenario and a medium growth scenario where we identified, we think these things will happen in the urban renewal area in terms of development. And both of those were fairly high scenarios. And then we adopted a urban renewal financial report in 2014 that adjusted those and sort of landed in the middle of those two scenarios. And, but in 2017, when we moved forward with the Alpine Project, we readjusted our financial feasibility analysis again because we felt that that had been too aggressive and we weren't collecting that much increment. And we wanted to understand, you know, when will we be able to do the Third Street project? So what's our trend line now that we're looking at? And so we put together a financial feasibility analysis in 2017. And we're tracking pretty well with that one. We're a little bit higher than what we had anticipated, but we're, we're closer to that than any of the other ones. So it's good to see that we did that reset in 2017 and that's what's the basis for all of our planning, but we're doing well in terms of keeping on track with that. And then lastly, after we discuss what we've done, we start talking about next year's work plan. We work from a work plan like this for all our committees in the community development department. It helps us assign workload and move things forward. And we work with each committee on what that work plan is. And so we went through that work with MIRAC just at their last meeting. They've been working on this five-year strategic plan that sort of incrementally grows each year. We talk about the next year, but they've been building on their efforts from this, really focusing on a couple of projects and building on it. The projects they've been focusing on is Third Street Improvement Project, the Development Assistance Project, so that we can invest in private development to get that tax increment. And then also, we've had discussions about updating the downtown improvement plan. That plan was adopted in the year 2000. It was, it's what formulated this urban renewal effort. And we feel like now's a good time to reevaluate that, see what's working, what's not working, update it. There's lots of moving parts in the downtown right now. And then also take that effort and talk about, do we need to look at updating our urban renewal plan? For instance, the million dollars in parking, maybe we need to think about that a little bit more. So that effort will, will help with our, with updating a downtown urban renewal plan effort if that's an outcome of that. We'll be starting that, we're going to put out RFP for that this spring. And then MIRAC has decided to invest about $200,000. Their recommendation to you and the budget committee for next year's budget is to invest about $200,000 in that and really kick that off next year. So they'll go through the process of identifying how much funds they have and where they should be investing that. And that's what, that is what informs the budget that you receive as members of the budget committee. So that's the annual report. I just thought I would fill you in on the, their process of work planning and their annual budget as well at the same time.
Thank you so much. Any council discussion or questions? Counsel Peralta?
I have questions. Heather, it sounds like you have a bit of a cold, so I'm hesitant to make you talk more than you already have.
All good.
Okay. So I want to understand, like, urban renewal finance 101, like, if we could sort of just step back a little bit, and I, and it's mostly just for my edification, I think I understand it, but I'd also like it sort of explained a little bit at a slower pace for the public as well. And I'm just going to, so my impression is we created a taxing district, property owners pay into the taxing district in lieu of paying to other jurisdictions? And then the increment of the tax district or the value of the tax district goes up as the investment comes in to increase the valuation of the properties inside of the district? Is that roughly?
Kind of. I mean, the, the way I put it in layman's terms is when you, when you adopt an urban renewal district, all the property taxes currently being paid when you adopt it continue to be paid. So everything that was being paid in 2013 to all the overlapping taxing districts, including the city of McMinnville, continues to be paid. Then any increment over and above that goes into, all of that goes into this agency. And the purpose behind that is you're going, you're collecting funds as an aggregate to invest in public improvements to really sort of jumpstart investment in that area. So you, you, you put these things in place where you have blighted properties and where you need a lot of public improvement.
Okay. So, so I get the second part. So the first part is you freeze the tax rate at a certain year and then as the valuations increase, then that money goes into the district. But then if somebody comes in and, and invests money, you know, makes an investment in a piece of property in the district, then that also gets added into the revenue for the district. And then, so then the other question is the, as the, as the dollars go out, meaning that we've got 800,000 or something or whatever the number is, that we have 30 million total that MIRAC can ultimately spend, that doesn't do anything to deprecate the revenue brought in to the other entities?
Yeah. Not the frozen revenue.
Yeah, not the frozen revenue, but also, so the urban renewal laws become fairly complicated because over the years, so not to become Portland, but they are the largest urban renewal agencies. I'll, I'll use them for that matter. I'm probably one of the oldest. They have some longstanding urban renewal plans in districts. And so there was a discussion of as the increment grows, is there an opportunity to sort of funnel off some of that increment at different times to the overlapping taxing districts? So they're, they're getting some funds to help with that growth. And so that is written into the law. There's this calc, there's this complicated formula, but as, as this urban renewal district gets to a point of maturity and is collecting a lot more. So for instance, in Redmond, their downtown district is probably about 15 years older than this. Their increment yearly is about two and a half, $3 million. Once you get to a place where you're collecting a certain amount, then some of that amount is, is funneling off to the overlapping taxing districts.
By state law?
Yes.
Okay.
That's all calculated in there.
Okay, thank you. And then the other question I had is that you said that the school fund is back, backfills the money that comes out of, that goes, sorry, that goes into the urban renewal district. So is that over and above what the, the max school district would get? So when you say backfilled, you mean?
Yeah, backfill is kind of, so the way it works is, and if you want to, Walt is our chair, by the way, of MIRAC, so I could have an answer to this as well. But my understanding is the state establishes a certain amount per student in the public school system and that's distributed to the different school districts and based on collections. And so when it's said it's backfilled, everything's collected at the state level and then it's distributed out. So the impact of a smaller urban renewal district like McMinnville compared to some other urban renewal areas, which, where the increment is millions, it's really, it's really miniscule and it's, and the, and McMinnville schools district is still getting X dollars per student that every other school district is getting. Did I explain that properly?
Yeah, I guess I would just add that the, the statewide school payment per student has an adjustment that relates to urban renewal, but it's done on a statewide basis so that it's not penalizing individual communities for their urban renewal district. And all of the, all of the communities in Oregon are paying for all the urban renewal districts. And so the, so that gets averaged and has the same impact, as I understand it, on the, the amount paid per student by the state. And that's what they call backfilling.
Got it.
So there isn't an inordinate effect in a locality.
Well, I, I really appreciate you indulging the questions. It's nice to have experts that I can ask these silly questions of, so thank you.
Thank you. Any additional council discussion or questions? Not seeing or hearing any, I would ask for a motion to approve resolution number 2023 dash zero one.
So moved.
I have a motion from Counsel Peralta.
Second.
I have a second from Counsel Gary. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed by saying nay. And the resolution? And the resolution has passed unanimously. And I will now adjourn the Urban Renewal Agency meeting at 8:09 PM. And now City Council will be going into our second executive session in the conference room. No decisions will be made in executive session. Thank you.